Oh, you're right. All right, thank you. So 6:15, so we'll call the meeting to order. April is remote. So April, if you could state your name, where you are zooming in from and the reason you're remote.
If anyone's with.
Oh, and if anyone's with.
April Anderson. I'm in Charleston, South Carolina on vacation and Carl Anderson is in the room with me.
And so we'll do all votes by roll call. So when we vote, they'll ask people for her vote. So. Thank you. All right. So now I just need a motion to accept the public and non-public minutes of May 11.
I will make that motion.
All right, any discussion?
I have one correction for the public minutes. On page four, we were discussing the financial report. We had a conversation about the communication plan. It's noted that I will update the plan and forward it to the group. I was updating the plan and forwarding it to Holly. And that's an important distinction because otherwise it's all that quorumming and potential illegal meetings and stuff like that. So that is what was voted to Holly.
And did you have one for, oh, did anybody have anything for the public minutes? April, did you have any corrections for the?
I do not.
I mean, you had non-public.
I didn't, I.
I have one. I have one correction for the non-public.
All right.
Roll call vote has Erica Killian saying.
Oh, no, I didn't catch that.
Should be Julia.
Oh, yeah.
All right.
You can't, I mean, can't walk around without finding your pillow.
All right. And any other corrections? All right, then, all those in favor of approving the public and non-public minutes of May 11th as amended, say aye.
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 Great, thank you. All right, up next up is ELO presentation by Cheyenne. And remember, we are all friendly. You've been here before. And you have a cookie at the end.
You have a cookie in the middle if you want.
Sure, you can have a cookie in the middle.
Totally cool.
So, yeah, if you would like to tell us about your presentation for the decal for the school van and anybody else, if anybody else could speak to it. I don't know, Karen and Anne are both not here, so I don't know if Chris or Wayne or somebody could do something. Any input at any point, but go ahead. Or Mom can help out.
Okay, so everyone has one of these?
Yep.
So her ELO project is decal designs for the school van. And of course, when you get to the last stage, she threw in a little bit of the own flair there. You want to take off from there? I started.
Yeah, she got your, she got your rolling.
What about tomorrow?
Tomorrow is when I do my presentation and tomorrow I was going to have the kids there vote on which ones they like. And lots of that maybe have plenty of security possible.
Yeah. This is sort of your practice for your ELO presentation tomorrow. Because kind of look at it that way. Yeah, so, so whatever you're gonna say in tomorrow, just tell us, lay it on us.
Why did you want to do this project? What, what spurred this?
I never really thought about it. It was a recommendation to me. The option was given to me, so I just kind of went with it.
Well, did you grow into it? Did you find out you liked this sort of graphic design?
I like paper.
Like paperwork.
Yeah, and for Gina, because she wasn't on the board, when you presented this to me before, she, she showed us her portfolio before, so it was all paper and whatever, and it was amazing. Really amazing.
Her mentor was here last time as well, and he was very excited about the work that she was doing.
Yeah.
I'm trying to help, we're all trying to help.
I know, yeah. This is one of her designs. I just love it so much.
So she's been working really hard on transitioning like physical pencil and paper to learning all of the aspects and the different things in the digital art. That's why these are only sketches. And she's got the original sketches here, which looked better than the, like,
copies.
The copies didn't really catch everything.
I didn't really have enough time to finish them, so the copies were very light.
The idea for her presentation changed a couple of times right before.
And the last time it changed, I had like two days to do it.
So you had like two days to do all these?
Yes.
Wow, she actually did those.
Oh, wow. These are amazing. I think last time you said when Jason was here, you, you had like, he had some, was it wasn't a tablet? Was it a tablet that you were using? That was pretty small.
It's just like a huge.
Yeah.
It links to
a computer.
A laptop that has like the design program on it, which she'll be showing the students that go tomorrow.
Which program are you using?
I have no idea.
I just do. I don't actually know.
Okay.
But I don't think we need to show the rest of the kids, like it in action.
So are you using the program at all to change it into a vector image, or is Jason doing that part of it? Are you like drawing it and having him make it electronic, or are you transferring it over?
I do.
You do all of that?
She did go to the third grade class at one point and help them do designs, and then they picked,
like, they picked, we picked one design from each class for third grade and we made them a district.
Cool.
And she did all of the transferring herself.
Awesome.
Okay, so because I wasn't on the class, I'm, I'm new again. So once, when you're done, you're gonna walk away with this thing for the van? I'm, I'm a little confused.
If one of these designs is approved and picked, she will finalize everything, get it completely transformed to digital, and then would have to be approved, yeah, again. And then Elite Vinyl would make the decal image for the van and have it put onto the van.
Cool. Thank you. Yes, that's, so the kids are gonna, tomorrow, excuse me, and and then we are gonna vote on, approve what the kids vote on, or.
I'm not really sure. I asked Mr. Hughes and it was kind of, he said have the kids vote on it, but obviously it has to be approved.
Final thing, yeah, so it'll come to us in August probably.
There'll probably be some cost, but, oh, yeah, that's, that's not a lot.
Those are magnetic bonds.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. And, and it's such a, for, you know, culmination of the project, so it's definitely worth it. Yeah, awesome. Well, yeah, and it's funny when you say she threw a little over flair in it, the, some of her flair like that in her portfolio. So, yeah, definitely. Yeah. Any other questions for Cheyenne?
How will it make you feel knowing that the world will see your artwork on the side of our van?
I'm not really sure.
I would think it's an accomplishment.
Yeah. Yeah.
It's gonna be pretty cool.
Yeah, it's gonna be pretty cool.
She at least has talked more than the last time she was in here. She's very slowly coming out of her shell, and I think that the ELO program has been really, really great for helping her with. And when they did the presentation luncheon thing, she actually spoke into the speech and she made it all the way through.
Oh, yeah.
Stuttering and just gave up halfway through.
Yeah, no, just keep going, you know?
Cheyenne, what grade are you in? I think that's important.
You're in eighth grade.
She's the youngest student.
Youngest. Cool. Would you, would you do another ELO in the future?
Yeah.
Yep.
I believe she intends to stay there and continue working with learning and improving all the skills, including the digital. Try and.
Yeah. Both of you did a great job. And that's good, because Jason helped her along last time, but you, Cheyenne, yeah, she's talked to you so much. She's so much more confident this time. So it's awesome. It's great to see you.
It's also, it's also hard being in the middle.
Yeah.
With everyone like, boom. So.
Yeah. So any other questions for Cheyenne?
I just need to know, does this guy in the back, did you have a name? You should name him.
Totally name it.
Yeah.
Yeah, maybe let, let Mr. Ponce know. September, whenever, and he can come back and let us know.
Definitely.
Yeah, no, definitely. All right, well, if we have any questions, do you have nothing else?
My phone, sorry.
I'm sure that was April.
Yeah, it was me.
Well, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's it.
Good luck tomorrow. Yeah, good luck tomorrow. Yeah, yeah, we'll let you know, like, let us know.
Which one they vote for.
Yeah, let's know what one they vote for, and then we'll take it from there.
Did we do everything?
I don't know.
Thank you, Auburn.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, that's good, meeting over. All right, next up, Wayne, the update on COVID.
We have two cases, active cases currently. Now we're at 2:38, which we have 128 at the elementary school and 110. I'm hopefully that's all we'll end up with. 312 cases in the last 14 days in Cheshire County, and I guess the information of interest is the governor vetoed the legislation that would have prohibited us from going remote or determining masks should be worn. So I think we've, you know, when we get it to the fall, depending on what's going on, we'll have that conversation. Love to resurrect some of our metrics around when we would wear masks, when we wouldn't. So that was kind of surprising news, but it came amid a flurry of legislation last week.
Any questions for Wayne? I mean, like, right now, Cheshire's high, but I think the last thing, it was trending back to low, so, you know, go up and down probably also.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. Okay, thanks. Board goal setting dates, so we have July 14th, the board and Wayne, and then July 21st, the board, Wayne and the other administrators. So, you know, we just left it with Wayne to reach two folks who should be there and like, you know, any of the new people coming in, so John, if we have an HR, a new HR person, that person, we chat to them and just see if they can make it for that day. July 14th is coming 2021. No, don't go back to 2021.
Yeah, that's not.
So it's Thursday night?
Yeah, it was two consecutive Thursdays. So the 14th is us and you at 6:00 PM on the 14th, and then the 21st is the board and the, you know, A team at 6:00 PM. So, you know, and it's July, so whoever can make it, we hope as many people can make it possible, because best, but we understand. What time is that? 6:00 PM, both nights. And I will send out, I'll have to, to grab them, but I can send out our current goals. Basically, they're well, Wayne lists them in his report too, but I'll send out the word doc, so everybody has it. And Sean already sent me some ideas, so to, you know, for just to distribute to everybody before the meeting, and if anybody wants to have anything they want, just send it to me and I'll make sure we all get it right, you know, shortly before the meeting. And, yeah, any questions, any other comments about the goal setting date? Okay. August meeting date. Usually we will, we historically move our August meeting. Oh, putting it in there.
No, I just had to do some Spanish.
Sorry, August. August, usually, you know, we meet on a second Wednesday, obviously, but usually in August, we'll push it to the third to make it closer to when school starts. Um, so there are five Wednesdays in August, so instead of the 10th, we could do either the 17th, the 24th. New teachers will have already started, so I don't know if you guys want to go that late, or do you think the 17th is fine? You know, close enough?
I'm on the 10th. I'm on the 10th, 24th.
Yeah, okay, so then the 17th is probably, because 17th is still pretty close, you know, better than the 10th. So what do you guys think? August 17th at 6:15? For our August board meeting?
Yeah, sure.
Okay.
Why the 15, why 16?
Well, it's funny, Gina and I just had that discussion right before the board meeting started. So we can quickly discuss that. So we used to forever ago meet at 6:30, and then we started meeting at 6:15. And Gina reminded me of this, which I totally forgot why we even moved it, but at the time, there was a board member who wanted the extra time to go through the manifest. You know, start the board meeting and then have time to go, so. So that was why.
That's why, why, we used to meet at 6:30 back, in the way, way back days.
Yeah.
We met at 6:30. We started going to 6:15 to have more time with the manifest. And we did the manifest in here, so we could ask questions about what are we approving all these checks about?
Yeah, so.
So, so if we wanted. When I came back this time, I went manifesto in there, and now I have to come at 6 o'clock and look at the manifest, because we're not doing it in here.
Yeah, so we can, that's a, since you raised a question, yeah, we could talk about it right now, so. And I don't remember Sean professionally, I remember, because that happened, I think, with COVID, when it started going over there, right?
Yes.
Didn't it? Okay, that was a COVID thing.
Yep.
So we couldn't bring it back, and what we would do is
We used to just pass it around.
Pass it around during the meeting. It still wasn't great, preferable, because you're moving on in the meeting and you're trying to pay attention.
Right, well, that's the thing. It's like, if we're gonna use that 15 minutes for the manifest, then maybe that shouldn't be like start the meeting and do all the things.
Yeah.
We should just do the manifest.
So get here 6, but we're here, so we have to call the meeting to order, do the manifest, then start with the agenda.
Start with the agenda. I mean, it's empty, I mean.
Yeah, just want to think about that for all.
Oh, yeah, no, that's fine. I actually wish the community would push it earlier to six, but.
Yeah, I don't want to be, I'd rather either stay or be earlier.
Yeah, see, my only thing, well, I guess it's not too bad, but like, I'm all Jim, but Jim was having, I know Jim.
Jim couldn't, yeah, Jim couldn't do.
I work till five, but I'm usually here early anyway, so.
I don't have, yeah.
April, what do you think about pushing, starting in April, start at August, I mean, starting in August, changing the school board meeting till six, and then we get out a little earlier.
So we would start with, start by going over the manifest, if that's what I'm hearing?
Yeah, call the meeting to order, because we're all together, so it's a meeting.
Yeah.
Review, yeah, pass the manifest down, look at it, and then start the meeting, meeting at 6:15.
Okay, yeah, I don't have a problem with the time.
Okay, so you could be here for six?
Yeah, I'm usually here by six anyway.
Yeah, yeah, and I'm always here early too, so what do you guys, what do you, Wayne, Joey? Yeah, because you guys are here anyways, so.
Yeah, if you miss, great.
Yeah, I mean, and, you know, and we wouldn't have to start the meeting necessarily at 6:15 if we all look at the manifest.
6:05, then we get.
Correct.
Yeah.
Correct.
Yeah, because we've already started. Okay, so how about then in April, oh, my goodness, April, see, we've done it. In August, these A ones, in August, we will start at, so I guess the meeting needs to be noticed for six.
Yep.
So we'll start noticing the meetings for six.
Six.
Yay. Awesome. All right, so that came out of our August meeting date, right? Okay, so we have, have we just, we didn't decide yet, certainly, for sure, the 17th.
I'm doing 17.
Do we need to vote on changing the meeting time, or?
I don't think so. Changing the meeting time?
It'd be good if you had it in the record that next year you're 6 o'clock, and then everybody goes back and say, oh, I've just been turning in at 6:15, but.
Okay, so we want to make a motion?
I will make the motion.
I'll second.
Okay, any more discussion? All right, all those in favor of starting our meetings at 6 o'clock, starting with the August 2022 meeting? Say aye.
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 Oh, I'm sorry, thank you, April. Okay, any opposed? All right, great. And then our August meeting will be moved to the third Wednesday, so it'll be August 17th at 6:00 PM. Cool. Great, thank you all. Superintendent search. I have been, went back a few times to Barrett, but he had been out of the office a lot with some stuff happening with his family, so I haven't gotten all the information, whatnot, from Barrett, and I reached out to another board member who had, their board has used some of these others firms, so I'm just still compiling that information, so I don't have anything, but, so if we could put that back on the agenda for August, and Wayne and I can be in touch over the summer. I know Barrett said he, he, you know, suggested we start after Labor Day, but I know we'll want to get kind of our ducks in a row before that, so Wayne and I will talk it for our August meeting. We can have kind of a plan of how to attack it.
Starting to get kind of tight.
Oh, I know, but we don't, we aren't really meeting, meeting in July, do you know what I mean? For, just the goal setting, so. Um, and I'm, I'm, and I'm gonna get on Barrett before Labor Day. I, I didn't agree with him with Labor Day. But I, but I can definitely get stuff from him this summer, and we can get it all pulled together and come up with kind of a proposal, and then at our August meeting, we can set the, you know, put the thing out for people, you know, volunteers to be on the committee. Appoint people in September, right? I mean, I like throw stuff out there. If you don't agree, that's fine.
I, I just, I just think it's getting, it's getting very tight to the end of the year.
Well, do you want to have a regular meeting in July?
Can we just discuss in one of the two meetings, scheduled meetings, we already have?
I mean, we can do it. The problem is, it's the only thing we can, but we would have to Zoom, because it's a goal-setting meeting, which we usually are, I mean, it's open to the public, but we don't usually Zoom those, so if we were gonna do something like that, I would think we would want, you know, if we're gonna talk about much more than goals at that meeting, you know what I mean? We'd want to have public input on it, we want it to be, which we can do. Do you want to put superintendent search and goals on for the?
I, I think that I think that makes it too much, because the goals are, goals are extensive.
Exactly.
So again, that first year I was here, but we were here till 11:00.
Correct, correct. Goals are extensive, and I don't.
So do you want to meet on the 6th or the 13th for July?
No, we've already had two meetings. I'm not gonna meet again.
Yeah. I mean, with all the other searches we've had, you know what I mean? We're just and, you know, the person was starting in January, so. Well, what's, what do you propose?
If we met and, sorry.
I thought, I thought we were gonna, it was on the agenda. I thought we were gonna be discussing it tonight, so.
Yeah, and we just don't have all the information yet, so.
If we have our meeting in August, does that mean we would be, since we have the meeting in August to request community members and whatnot to form a committee, is that what we're doing in August?
That's what we're talking about. I mean.
And then September would be basically opening it up to the search, yes?
Yes, September, we have to.
September.
So we could, couldn't we?
Ask for people.
Why, why can't we get?
Or we could do that now.
Why can't we get, I was gonna say, get that part started now?
Started, and then we could approve them.
In July or August.
I mean, July, that wouldn't take long.
No, that, that's fine. Approving a list is fine.
Yeah, so if we do that out now, we could approve the list in July.
We generally do that in non-public anyway.
That's fine. I'm, I'm happy with that. If we can figure that out now.
All right, so, so if Maria and Anne would have to probably help you, because I don't know if you've done it before, put out, you know, based on what's in the SAU manual, the call for volunteers, the only thing so I was thinking about this, is that there's teachers on there, so we want to get that out as soon as possible, because you know, they're gonna be gone in two weeks, and, you know, we can't expect them to be checking their emails.
Two weeks. I mean, people, I'm guessing if people are interested, they'll either say yay or nay as soon as they know.
Yeah, that's what I mean, that's what I mean, though, we should get it
Yeah.
out to them as soon as possible.
I can do it on my Friday.
Okay, cool. Yeah, so I don't have the SA, I mean, I do have the SA manual in my bag, but just however many teachers, it was like one from each building and each principal and, right, it's, yeah, it was pretty extensive, because it's superintendent.
It's in the board.
Oh, is that one of the pages? Oh, cool. I thought I couldn't dig in my.
Two members of the school board, two SAU community members, the business administrator, the human resource manager, two Hidden Hills School District principals, two Hidden Hills School District teachers, one from each building, and the director of curriculum assessment.
Okay, so if you could get email out to staff and then do a post to the community, and then we can, and, and the deadline, you know, is for that meeting July, so the 14th.
Well, we probably want.
Well, I mean, but to the absolute best, they, we are gonna be looking at it.
We want to definitely go a couple of days before.
Oh, yeah, yeah. I just meant, yeah, but that, just so they know, or I don't know how you word it, that that's when they're looking at it. So, yeah, by either that Friday before, or whatever is, is best to get them pulled together for us. You know, we'll leave that up to you guys. All right, any other questions about that?
Do you think the board members?
I would say we would do that in July. We can do that in July, when we do everything. I mean, I actually wanted to do it now. I'm up to, I'm up in either way, you guys wanted to do it.
I think we're in July, which is, we're in a whole committee at the same time, I would just, it keeps it cleaner, because then we're doing the whole committee at one discussion.
Yeah, I agree. You know, are everybody okay with that?
Yeah.
You okay with that, April?
All right, yes, July is good.
Cool. All right. Anything else? All right, communication plan, Sean.
So all I did after the last meeting was update the communication plan to include the positions versus the people. Initially, we had the people like in our inventory for like platforms and people who can do what and have passwords and blah, 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 blah. So I replaced it, I replaced the individual people with the positions that have that information, just to make it more of an ongoing plan. It doesn't need to be updated like constantly. And while I kept COVID stuff in here, like as examples of what messaging, messaging can be, I de-emphasized that it's like strictly for COVID, so it's like for district messaging, and it's using some of our COVID messages as examples. So I just kind of made it more of a generic working document. And that was pretty much it.
Does anybody have any questions for Sean about the updates?
Yeah, thank you.
Do we need to approve the changes, the updated communication plan?
Yep.
Okay. As amended, yeah. All right, so we just need a motion to approve the communication plan as updated in May 2022.
I'll make the motion.
Any other discussion about the communication plan? All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And.
Aye, sorry.
Okay, sorry, I know, we're stepping over each other. Any opposed? All right, great, thank you. All right, potential sale of the driver's ed car, so Jay.
And then Jody will speak to that.
So we have been approached by one of the driver's ed classes in Keene. They have expressed some interest in purchasing our car, so I wanted to discuss it here. So as a reminder, we do not have a certification to have a driver's ed program here. We lost that because we didn't have a certified driver's ed instructor. So we lost them, lost our certification. In order to recertify, we would need to find a driver's ed instructor. And they're very hard to come by. We really tried hard to find one, and we haven't been able to. So to become a driver's ed instructor, in case there's anybody here who wants to do that, you need to take three classes, college classes at Keene State College. Then you get an initial certification. That allows you to work for a certified program for two years while you take additional classes at Keene State College. And at that point, you become a certified instructor, and then we could hire, then we would hire somebody to then become a certified program. So in reality, for us to regain our certification, I feel you're looking at three years.
Unless we can find.
Unless we can find one that's certified now, fully certified, not just in, with the three classes.
And what are our kids doing now? We don't have, we don't have an instructor. And what are our kids doing now? We don't have, we don't have an instructor, we don't have drivers that.
We don't.
What are they doing now?
Uh, a lot of them are waiting till they're eighteen or they're going to Keene and Chris probably could speak to this.
Yeah, there's uh, so some of the schools that she's referring to, they are having openings, however, they do have to take time out of their school day. Potentially based on the availability of the driving hours with the instructor. Um I will say that. If we found one, it's going to be very hard pressed, because. The driving schools in Keene are hard up for instructors as well. So if they're in the Keene area, they're already working for them if they're able to. But what she was saying, uh what Jody was saying with three years, I think that's best case scenario, if we had to build one from the ground up. I think realistically, it's going to be closer before going through the process of renewal. Um the state police told me it's, it's rather involved. So.
So then, but then we'd have to buy a new car.
We would.
Right.
We had a pretty lengthy conversation about this at a previous meeting, that was attended pretty heavily, if I recall, because it was during budget time.
Yep.
And um I think we as a board. Said that we would continue to try. To provide drivers ed to this community, which is a valuable resource, and although there may be obstacles and it may be challenging. I feel like selling this car for a nominal amount of money on our, in our total line item budget. Is not showing the kind of good faith that I feel like we should be presenting, that we really are going to continue to make an effort to bring this program back. To Hinsdale, to bring a program back to Hinsdale, as I understand it. The car is also being used for other things anyway currently, so I personally think that it is um. Contradictory to what we presented to this community before and our continued support of trying to get drivers ed program in Hinsdale.
I, I agree, I think we would be shooting ourselves in the foot. By getting, getting rid of a car for, you know. A small amount of money, just because we don't have an instructor and then.
I mean, we don't know, somebody.
We don't know.
We could have somebody that's semi-retired that moves to Hinsdale next year, and oh my goodness, I have, I was like, you never know, I just feel like in good faith. We need to follow through with our commitment to the trying to.
Right, we need to be super duper aggressive about trying to find somebody, because drivers ed in this community is. Really in the necessity, we cannot, our kids.
And it's extraordinarily expensive in Keene.
Yeah.
It's a lot more expensive.
Lot more expensive, so.
Yeah.
I mean, I know, that would be nice, but I just feel like it's, I don't, I feel it's an injustice to the community to sell the car.
Yeah, and just for Gina, because when we had this discussion before, you weren't back yet, but the state like. Chang- you know, changed the requirement, so that's why all of a sudden it became like. It now we aren't, you know, I mean, we couldn't, you know, we're in a position to do it, because Jake, to say like massively put this, these big requirements on it.
Okay.
Yeah.
So I can tell you the car is in good shape, it's got seventy-two, seventy-three thousand miles on it. Um it doesn't cost us anything to register the vehicle, because it's got a municipal license, so once registered, it stays registered, so we are, you know. Just, you know, preventative maintenance, oil changes, that kind of thing, it does get used, it gets used um. By if a student's going over to Brattleboro or for an E L O, if we got one or two students, we'll use that to save gas money instead of taking the van.
Yeah.
Um, some of our staff uses it when they're doing um local errands for the school, so it does get used, it's just that it was brought. To us, so we felt that we should bring it to you.
April, did you?
Uh my question was, what we were, if it's not being used for drivers ed, what was it being used for, and it sounds like that was pretty much answered, so.
Yeah, and I would just say, you know, April this afternoon, so we weren't able to do anything with this, but I've only gotten a message from a parent, which she forwarded to me. And saying most of the same stuff, like what it's used for, how expensive it is to get the kids to Keene to do it, and um the time. You know, for the kids to do it in Keene, so basically everything uh. Was, is, was, that was in this email, we, we've addressed the other uses and how it's, you know. You know, it's just nominal.
And it's all changing and whatnots. They're missing school, they might have missed school to go to Keene or Hinsdale.
Yeah, like it's optional times, so we certainly like to report that. Yeah, exactly, so. And um Jody and I were talking briefly before, like, I don't, even Brattleboro is all, the driving schools in Brattleboro have a huge way in.
Yeah.
List too, so.
Maria had a, I don't know.
Well, I just have a quick question, okay. Um, does Keene? Only let our students come if they, all their students, I mean.
You know what I mean, do they?
It's a first come, first served basis, because the, the schools are privatized. So whether it be the Church Driving School or T S R Driving School, or any of those, they're, they're, they're private, they're not solely at Keene High. Or anything like that, they will utilize the building much like, we had somebody utilize our building for the instruction, so it's very, very similar. Um, just their contract out to these privatized companies instead of being in-house, that's where the cost goes out.
Right, so Keene High doesn't have their own drivers ed instructor either.
No, they do not, they, they contract out.
Yeah.
And so part of contracting out is they will supply their own vehicle. One of the, uh, as I was speaking with Craig Monroe of T S R. He was trying to find us an instructor, one that's based closer to us, which he said there are none that he knows of.
Yeah.
Um. In the event that he did find somebody that would be willing to take on the school. Uh they would have cut us a discount for the one-year probationary period in return for using our own vehicle.
Cool.
But uh unfortunately, we haven't been able to locate that person.
Yeah.
And he's, he, he's tried, he tried since I came on board, so roughly August or September.
It's the whole year now.
Yeah, been about a year.
Okay, cool, thanks for the info.
But the good thing is that Chris really knows the ins and outs of this and has been working in hard, he's been really.
The state police for driver's education, uh even their trooper has been trying to find us somebody to come teach it. Uh that is fully certified, but they're, they're shorthanded across the board, just like everywhere in their location. So if any, if any parents want to teach it, please sign up.
Alright, does anybody else have any questions about this? Sean. April, you're all set?
I'm good.
Alright, so um. I guess if we're not going to take action, we don't need to take a vote on it, because it's just, it's a consensus, and do you want us to take a motion?
No.
No, yeah, because we don't really have any.
If you want, if you're thinking about seriously selling, if you need a motion in second.
Yes, we're just kind of consensus that we're gonna, not, we're gonna keep it and just keep trying to find somebody.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Great, thank you, thank you, Jody and Chris. Um, next up, funds for Eric Mann for.
So, yeah, Eric Mann, who has been leading our social emotional learning initiative uh for several years. We have, we are able to get money from S R three to support his effort next year. And we would do that in September, uh when we do the next quarter, we rewrite, but we wanted to make sure the board is okay with that. Um because if there's any expectation that, you know, if Eric's lining up clients, we want to make sure that he knows we're in the group. But I wanted the board's opinion before we think about rewriting.
Okay, questions or discussion about that?
Well, it sounded out like um. The, the committee. Uh wanted to keep his services, that it was important and they, they are valuing. Whatever he's bringing to us, so I would, I would say yes.
Yeah, I would support, I understand, based on him becoming general and staff and being your own committee, that it's really proven to be valuable.
So we'll move forward with that, thank you.
April, do you have any comments about Eric Mann?
I know, I'm all for it.
Uh do we need a motion for that?
Yes, yeah, we'll need one and.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Oh, do we have a dollar amount on it?
Ten thousand.
Then I'll make that motion too. Before I make a motion for a bike check. Which is not my intention. That's why that occurred to me, a dollar.
I just read a up to ten thousand, the wording. Yeah. Alright, any further discussion? Alright, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
April?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, great, thank you. Alright, M O U, the shared human resources position, so um Anne and Sean, I guess I'll speak to that. We haven't turned back in a minute.
Right, so it's, so it's the same as we looked at last month.
Exactly.
Um. It's not your fault. Um. So I would say that. You know, I, I. Obviously, it would have been nice to get that information from the attorney, but the hangup that I had was based on that, uh the one-year term. Um, thinking that it should be longer, but as was pointed out too at the meeting, that was the term for the M O U, not for the position. So it probably. I'm, I would be okay with it, um I would still like that, the one correction that I had last month at the very, very, very end. Um, I believe it's in section eight and it's supposed to be district or town. And it says district of town or something like that, so I think it's all one letter. Yeah, but um, other than that, I think that, I think that my concern was kind of answered, so.
I, I will. Um, so then we don't really need to do anything, or did we approve?
We have to approve it.
We would say.
Prove it, then have me send it to Jill.
So they can just like that. Yeah, because we need to be attending that.
Correct.
Alright, so is there any more questions or discussions about that? Okay, so I thought that we just need most to approve it.
I'll make motion to approve the M O U as well, be amended, that has that one correction.
Second. Um, any other discussion? Alright, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
April?
Aye.
Hey, thank you, thank you guys for all your work on that. Um, alright, S A U manual, um so um I'd like to thank Anne and Maria for making the updates. So they just put the page rather than print the whole thing again, they just put the pages in there that were updated, and I went through it with my. List of, of things that I have um. Pointed out, or you know, suggested or questioned, so um and everything is, looks good. According to my list, so um. If, does anybody have any other questions or comments about that? Yeah, then we just need a motion to accept the S A U manual as amended.
I'll make that motion.
Alright, any other discussions? Okay, all those in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
You guys say aye? I heard Gina, alright, awesome, thank you, I was like, okay. Sorry. You know, I don't know why.
I'll say aye now.
I was just making, funny, because I heard Gina, you didn't have her here.
I just said it in my head.
Maybe I, maybe I zoned out, I don't know, but I, I, I. Okay, thank you, um sports injury emergency action plan, who's speaking to that?
Well, I think Anne is going to, Chris, are you?
Um, I can do my best.
If not, we can table this until August.
Uh, just because I probably won't be able to answer all the questions, I'd recommend tableing it until.
It has to, it has to begin. Yeah, we're gonna. Where um the policies of the board, sorry, I don't remember which one, but it was the um policy that determined that we needed to have this plan in place by August. Okay, so. We did the plan and the policy that what we threw back to you on everything that has to be in the plan. So we tried to. I know, I tried to follow that really close, it was all of the, but, so. And the people that were involved in it were Maria, Erica, Anne, Chris, who are point, um, and Sam. And they've all, you know, gone over this, and this is what came out of many, many emails. And those.
So I can, I could do my best to fill in where needed uh on questions.
And we certainly could approve it tonight and then look at it again in August or September.
Never tell me change. No, it's not, it's not changing. Yeah. Okay, so does anybody have any questions about this? April, you all set?
I am, I'm good.
Okay, so if there are no questions, then we just need most to um accept this sports injury emergency action plan.
I will make that motion.
Alright, any further discussion? Alright, all those in favor, say aye. Aye, April.
Aye.
And uh, great, so thank you, everybody, who had, it sounds like it was, there's several people, so thank you for having a part in pulling that together. Alright, uh job description updates, we have para educator and. So, Anne, if you want to.
It's the only thing that we um are adding to the parent's job description, from giving responsibility for. Um, billing's gonna. M S B, it's an important function, uh when people do not do their billing, the district needs. Money, we had a meeting a month or so ago, and there were several people that were not billing properly, so. Laura, who is the administrative assistant for the sped program, had been emailing them for months. And it was, we had, like I said, we had a meeting and Patty um itself and Maria. And we decided that the email could, would come from me. To get them to maybe do it, and within two weeks, Jody received a check of, for eleven thousand dollars. So it's very important that people keep up their M S B billing, um. And the parents have built in time to do this. Um, during their time, and it's just, it's very important. We're one of the only district around that still bills for Medicare and gets the info. And we have to have our service providers, such as the social workers, the nurses. Everyone else approve what the parent, that's how it works. And it's really important that we keep this revenue flow, flow, flow going.
And, and if I could add in, um. This has always been understood as, as a requirement of the job, way back when I was a para. We, we had to do it, it was required, so it's just kind of formalizing it here.
Formal, and, and then that puts more teeth in it to be enforced.
Oh, yeah, right, right.
So my question is the same question I had last month, was this discussed with the union?
I know.
It was the extent, the question was asked, I reviewed the recording, we discussed why. Um, and it was my understanding that there was going to have a, we were going to have a conversation to make sure that that didn't run into. An issue.
And I would assume that would have been.
So, so did that conversation happen, is that question?
Anyway.
I, I'm not sure Patty had that or not, I think it's, I, I just think it's totally on, I mean, it's hard. They don't approve job descriptions, you do.
Okay, but the conversation that happened last time was the fact that, you know, we also have requirement for, the example that we use, we also have requirement for. Deadlines on grading, and that did work its way into negotiations, and that did become an issue um that had to be discussed. So this is similar to that, and that, again, is the conversation that we had last month, and so conversation with the union, I believe, is appropriate. Before putting that in there. That's just my opinion.
Yeah, and that's what we said last month, so.
So it's okay, Maria, you, we can get together and, and Anne will figure something out, talk to Laura, who's the president of the union, and. Get it back to you.
Yeah, we can put this back on for August.
Yeah, I mean, we're not going to do much in the summer with this.
Yeah, I mean, and we, you know, don't want to sneak that one into July, you know what I mean, the goal setting, so yeah, so we'll just. Para back on for August, and if you guys can talk, just run it by um Laura, Kelsey, and Jill.
Patty may have already talked her by.
Okay. And then the other one is maintenance. There any questions about the maintenance?
Uh, my only question is, has the facilities manager approved of?
Yes.
Of that?
Yes.
Okay.
Any other question on the maintenance job description? April?
No.
Alright, so then uh we just need a motion to approve the maintenance one, it's the.
I will make that motion.
Give me a second, second. Alright, any further discussion? Alright, all those in favor of approving the ma- the new maintenance job description, say aye.
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 Any opposed, alright?
And I will make a motion to table the para educator job description.
Thank you, yeah, I was just gonna call for that, second. Alright, any further discussion on that? Alright, all those in favor of tabling the para position educator position job, apparent educator position job description until August, say aye.
Aye.
I'm on, April?
Aye.
No. Thank you. Alright, so that's we have re- reaffirmation um of uh of whose policies there. I guess we should probably do motions separately for those.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I know at least the first one, I think they're all uh related to a policy you passed. And it within embedded in the policy, you determine that it would be new annually, and this is set annually.
Yeah. Alright, excuse me, so first off, we just need a motion for the to reaffirm policy D A B, the fund balance policy.
I'll make that motion.
Second, alright, discussion or questions on that one? Yeah, you can see in the history of it, we do it every year, so um, alright, so if there's no question. So, um, alright, so if there's no questions, then all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
April?
Aye.
And, um, then same thing, motion for the reaffirmation of DFA.
I will make that motion.
Second. Alright, any discussion or questions on that? Alright, um, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Um, and then same thing, reaffirmation of data governance plan.
I will make that motion.
Second. Any further discussion on that? Alright, so, uh, all those in favor say aye.
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 Thank you. Um, and aren't you glad Deb, this is the last time you ever have to hear the words data governance?
Good job, Justin.
Yeah. Alrighty, uh, next up would be engagement letter from the auditor.
Alright, so our, we're, uh, would like to engage with Vashon Cookie again, they've been our auditors for several years. They do a great job, um, and we've scheduled tentatively based on, on your approval of this, uh, an audit the first week of November. Having given priority here.
I have to say, um, several years ago with a couple of districts, we looked around at the auditors in the area that were willing to take on schools. Very, they're at the enlist and they were not very receptive when we reached out and I think we lucked it. Have somebody that's lined up and has history with us.
And does anybody have any questions about that? April?
No.
Alright, so, uh, all those in favor of, uh.
Their motion.
We didn't watch, thank you, my gosh, thank you. Need a motion.
But I'll make a motion.
I'll second the motion. Alright, all of the favor of, uh, having me sign the engagement letter, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, April?
Aye.
Great, thank you. That's always a funny little, when that happens.
Help me out planning board a lot. Cause, cause you get carried away, but you get into all the stuff that I think you're like, wait, did I make a motion, did I do it? Yeah.
I know.
That missed me on prior report.
Um. Alright, so next, uh, is, um, spring 2020 policy updates from NHSBA. So Maria, Maria, did you wanna speak to any of these or?
Well, we thought the agenda was really full, so. Rather than selecting, you know, handful of policies to, we thought we would just put in, uh, yeah, would you agree to maybe start that process in August? Um, so this is just an overview of what, um, the nature of the meeting was proposing. And, um, a couple of the items are really technical, obviously, so would be anything to review, um, so we added them to the, um, policies we know on website, but. What we would start reviewing August, we wanted to, was for policies actually.
I suggested that we reach for, for Maria to not have any today because of the fact that we wouldn't be doing this, like there's Google and the hog. Yeah.
That makes sense.
Yeah.
But the information is still up, we, we will be.
So this is what's coming.
It's a preview.
Yeah.
Yes, I like that, I like having the preview, thank you.
Do anybody have any, any questions about that?
Mm-hmm.
Alright.
Bless you.
Great, thank you guys. Um, alright, uh, next up is any other business, does anybody have any other business?
I have a question.
Yeah, I, I have one other business.
She might be answering my questions.
After the last, there was discussion of the last board meeting regarding, um. I'm sorry, the school moderator's position, and I did, um, discuss this with legal, I, um. And he said, yes, I was the, the school clerk was the one who was going to appoint the monitor. So I did have one person express interest in it, so with our new school moderator is Mike Durst.
Thank you.
And I sworn, and then, I don't know, last month's planning board.
Was that why you guys got out of there? Yeah, okay.
Cool, well, hey, thank you Anne, thank you Mike. It's me, you, Mike in, uh, charge.
And as anticipated, Anne, you answered my question.
Okay, cool, does anybody else have any other, other business, April?
I do not.
Gina? No. Julie? And the only other thing I had is, um, so thank you to Anne Freitag, who is of course a level bill. Uh, Deb and Anne Diorio, it's your last school board meeting, don't smile too broadly. Um, thank you guys so much. And so I've, I've been on the board thirteen years, so I figured it out, just saying we have eleven meetings a year, not to mention all the other meetings. This is a hundred and forty-five meetings that I've been, and Gina, pretty much the same.
Yep.
Have been with you guys for a hundred and forty-five regular board meetings, so we're all crazy. But for that, but thank you guys so much, we appreciate everything and have a great retirement, we're all very jealous. But you get to retire.
Enjoy it, so enjoy it, so well done.
And there are cookies, they're just store bought, but they're cookies, so feel free, have some cookies. Thank you. Alright, uh, financial report, Jody.
Madam Chair, you have my reports, are there any questions?
Any questions for Jody? No? April, do you have any questions for Jody?
I do not.
Alright, look at that. Anne, I'll be moving. Um, curriculum, uh. I don't know, Wayne, if you can, or somebody can try.
Yeah, I can certainly refer, um, any, any questions. Of course, big items, twenty-seventh was a peat day for all staff and the day before, the twenty-sixth was the exhibition day. And I hope you had a chance to read the article in the bar with the former, uh, that followed on that Saturday. Um, all of the students did a remarkable job, um, you know, the adults that were engaged, it certainly was the best, uh, the, I think it was the best thing I've seen since pre-COVID. You know, as we're coming back from COVID and it looked normal, felt normal, kids were excited, really, their mentors were excited to have worked with them. It was just a great, uh, great day.
Awesome, thank you, any, any questions? Karen's last wing. April, you all set?
I am, I would just like to reiterate, um, what Wayne said, that the yellow day was, was a lot of fun, it was, it was fun being a part of it.
Great, then thank you for, for being there, thank you, you know, everybody for all of that. Um, alright, so next up is technology report, Deb.
Final time, thank you, man, and Karen, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. I'll do my best.
Any questions for Deb, for the final time? Justin has this like weary look on his. Oh man, it is sinking in. Seriously, any questions for Deb? April, any questions for Deb?
I did not.
Great, thank you very much. Alright, uh, principal reports, um. We usually start in general, I always get myself area, okay, so, uh, since we're first, so Anne, so, kind of Chris.
Yes, uh, Madam Chair, you have the principal's report from, this is Street Tag, who could not be here, however, I would like to highlight a few things. That this week, we are preparing for graduation. Uh, we've had rehearsals every single day at the end of the day for approximately an hour to an hour and a half. So our graduating class is working very, very hard to ensure the swift graduation. And I think they're all very, very excited. Um, for the remaining part of the school, we've completed our New Hampshire SAS that you have outlined with our growth. Uh, and I just wanted to take the moment to, to really thank our teachers for what they do. Um, I know we thank them every day, but there, there's a few out there that their students performed exceptionally well. And I'd just like to recognize a couple of those, if I may, uh, Mrs. Vogio in the sixth grade. Uh, her students performed very, very well, not saying that not other teachers did, but, uh, hers did exceptionally well. Uh, Mrs. Ball in the middle school also did very well. And one thing I will have you know is that the interventionalist, uh, Mrs. Reed, uh, her students showed a big advancement. So the interventionalist positions are helping as well as Miss O'Malley. So our teachers work exceptionally hard every day and I just wanna make sure that a couple have got a, got a nice shout out.
Awesome, thank you. Anybody have any more questions, any questions for Chris?
Feel, Colonel. Sorry.
Some background noise.
Yeah.
So awesome, great, thank you, Chris. That's good to know too about the interventionalist, because that, that is where.
It is working very, very well, I haven't, I have a bind members, if you would like that, I could easily get that for you, but.
Okay, yeah, well, if anybody wants that, just let, um, you know, let's let us know, we'll pass it on. Alright, um, thank you, alright, so Mr. Vogio.
Thanks, Madam Chair, um, yeah, my report, let me answer any questions, uh. Probably kind of a crazy noteworthy event, hey, was there was a lot of smells that you may have heard about on some social media, I don't know.
I don't know, I haven't been looking on social media.
We had a toilet issue all of the day, a toilet issue, a rodent die.
Oh.
And, um, unexplained smell from the kitchen, so it was quite a day. Mr. Lee did an awesome job in taking care of, boom, 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 it was like when it rains, it pours, that type of situation. But tomorrow we'll be back up and running without any bad smells.
There you go, oh, thank you.
But I'm for sure you would have already heard about it.
Well, I came right from work, so I haven't, so who knows, maybe I'll be, I'll some, very well could be out there, so.
But, uh, so anyways.
Uh, okay, so does anybody else have, or does anybody have any questions for Joe?
I, I do, I have one, I was looking at the enrollment list for the next year. And, um, you know, I'm new again, so would you remind me the, the preschool schedule?
So we have, um, the preschool threes are in the morning, Tuesday, Wednesday and Thursday. And we get, we limit that at twelve, um, simply because as a three-year-old, um, you know, from, um. Early, oh gosh, I can't remember the name, but anyways, as they turn three, we have to evaluate them if they have special needs. So we have to keep slots open for them.
Okay.
Um, typically, we cap any. But we have to, like I said, we have to allow that, and the same for preschool four, that's in the afternoon every day, Monday through Friday, from twelve-thirty to three-fifteen. And we cap that at sixteen to allow for any, for at least a couple of newly identified special education students to come in. We have to, we have to maintain at least fifty-fifty in special ed ratio to regular ed kids. Because it's not a, it's not defined as a special ed program.
Mm-hmm. And then, um, I'm just looking at the third and the fifth grade and the class sizes for those. And is that because of, we don't have instructors, we don't have teachers, or is that?
No, it, it just goes by, we have to adjust, you know, we have the teachers we have, and we have to adjust based on the needs of the kids. So, um, right now we have three third grades and, um, I spoke with Mrs. Wismann, she's gonna be looping with about fifty percent to sixty percent of her class up to fourth grade. And that way we'll be able to meet, um, meet the needs, we have two fourth grades this year, so those kids will only need two classes, fifth grade.
I was just concerned a little bit about the, the twenty and twenty, um, class size.
Yeah, and we base it, you know, like the, the rising, as you can see, the second graders on the table above. Have, um, it's a strong academic group, needless to say, the teachers did a great job too, and the interventionists. But, um, so trying to base their academic strength too, as well as, you know, like, if we have twenty kids in that class, they're twenty strong kids versus having twenty really needy kids that need more support and help their academics.
Alright, thank you, Joe.
Okay, any other questions for Joe? Um, I, I just wanna say for the recognition, I, you know, I'm able to make it.
Oh, awesome.
So yeah, so I can make it, um.
Thank you.
And if anybody, if any board member can attend.
It's on my calendar, yeah.
So yeah. Yeah, so I can make it to hand out the stuff, or we could do it, you know, packing, whatever. Yeah, I'll just be there. Just enjoy the show. Alright, awesome, thank you, Joe. Alright, for attendance report, Wayne.
Madam Chair, you have my report, I do have one new thing that happened between the time I wrote the report and today, it's okay. Quickly, um, on Monday, the commissioner announced that there was infrastructure money available for safety and security. Uh, it's an eighty-twenty split, so the statement paid even so, we paid twenty percent. We have a facility meeting next week, uh, so I'd like to be able to vote these things with the facilities committee, they've been working on these projects that we've been talking about for a couple of years. Uh, and roughly, uh, we have about thirty cameras that we've identified and we'll be talking with the facilities committee, we would need a new server if we were to put those cameras. Much better view of people coming in and out of the building, around the building. Um, you know, that probably would cost up to about seventeen-five, which would mean about thirty-five hundred would be obligated by the district if we did that. Uh, then we have a number of areas that don't have speakers, or I mean, have no speaker that people can hear within a particular location, and we have a lot of that. Now, we've been talking about it for quite a while, but we just couldn't get it into the budget. Um, and we also have an opportunity to take some of our outdoor lighting and replace it with LED lighting, which would be less energy, cost us less and much better lighting. So that cost would be about thirty-eight thousand if we did all of that, so I guess the board would all, would be obligated, or the district next year, for about twenty-five thousand if that, if we did everything. Um, and of course, we would get all of those projects done, so twenty-five thousand, get over a hundred thousand dollars worth of projects. So if you're okay with that, so give the facilities committee, Sean and Julia are the members on that committee next Friday, to go ahead. Because when this comes up, it's a first come, first served, uh, and it'll be posted on the website, those are very simple application, we just fill it out, send it in, likely get the check. But if we had to wait for a board meeting, we might miss the queue, so it's kind of one of those things where if it's okay, we'd like to go ahead to just kind of move up, with up and up to a mouth. You know, if you said, you know, get, say thirty-five thousand is enough to, is your expense, I don't think we'll come that, that much, but we can get a lot for our money.
Okay, discussion about that?
I highly recommend it, I have, I have a little bit less detailed mention of that in my facilities report that I handed out, so.
Next Friday, you said, Sunday?
Sunday. So I'll make the motion up to, up to thirty-five.
Second. Right, any more discussion or questions on that? April?
No.
Alright, so, um, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
April?
Aye.
Alright, thanks. Alright, awesome, thank you guys, uh, I have one question for your report, Wayne. In the second paragraph, when you're talking about, you know, staffing and, and whatnot, um, and you say, you know, we have to maybe rethink a few things. You said the, the admin will present a plan to the board at the July twenty-seventh board meeting, do you mean our goal meeting on the seventeenth or the one on the twenty-first when?
The one, the one on the twentieth, is it, don't we have a thirteen? I'd have to get my calendar.
I think it was the twenty-fourth.
Twenty-first, yeah. The twenty-first.
The later one, oh, cause all the.
We'll take a look to see what's left and come up with something, if we had to recommend some kind of combination or, or, that's a, could be a desperate measure. But I think that would be the time when we throw that in if we still have that desperate need.
Alright, cool, alright, so the twenty-first, alright, any other questions, Joe?
I have one. Um, so Wayne, do you have any, on page five of your report, uh, any more information on the zero-based budgeting or just that it's in process?
So I did call superintendent at, I think it was Exeter.
Hampstead.
Hampstead, and I know that Jody has been in touch with the BA over there.
Well, I've reached out to the DA.
And I reached out to superintendent, he hasn't called me back.
I haven't, I haven't response either.
Somewhere, finally again.
Do you want me to get him in trouble so you can get a call back?
I did mention that a board member.
I can make a phone call.
Board member's sister on his board, and that didn't seem to motivate him.
I'll, I'll send the text.
It's a crazy time with the end of the year, I know, so he's committing, we're emailing today to schedule a meeting, so, um.
And I joke when I say, get him in trouble.
Oh, yeah, absolutely, yeah, I just made you like on the record, but it's a crazy time.
It is.
But, uh, anyway, no, um, yeah, I mean, your sister's not in the chair, right?
No.
Yes.
Not yet anymore.
Yeah, exactly, that's what I was gonna say, and, and eventually, but yeah. Um, but no, so we're, so facilities committee, that was one of the things I sent, I, you know, to me. But no, so we're, so facilities committee, that was one of the things I sent, you know, to meet in July to talk about the zero-based budgeting and kind of get our, you know, thoughts together. So we will be meeting in July. Um, it looks like it'll may probably be the twenty-first. I wanted to talk to you afterwards, after, you know, just to make sure it all works actually. So anyway, so we can get that going. Alright, um, so next up, committee reports, Personnel Committee.
Nothing.
They help and wellness. Um, we had a meeting on the, and Jessica Green reported on the conference that the coordinators attended. There was more discussion about the health sale for the fall, next year, next fall.
Fall twenty-three.
Twenty-three. Um, sixty-nine people commit for, participated in wellness challenges over the year. And, uh, they were recognized at the employee party last Friday, Friday night, so that was, that was a lot of fun. Um, and talking about starting off those smoothie Fridays again. The what? The smoothie Fridays? Make it more than that.
Yeah. I might have to stay. We have a smoothie at your house.
We can have a special smoothie.
Whatever, you and I will get together.
Yeah. We have a special smoothie.
Special, we'll have specials.
Special retired smoothies.
On whatever beach you're on. Or country we're in.
Yeah.
Alright, thank you. Uh, finance, um, we just said we were scheduling a meeting. Budget, I'm gonna have to reach out to Dennis to see, you know, because I remember they wanted to meet in July to talk about who's gonna be there, right? Finance, I'll reach out to him. Um, staff development. Anything?
Had a great twenty-seven PD day. And we're still working on, well, actually approaching the state with a request, a waiver, uh, because the plan is due the thirtieth of June, and we expect we'll get a, well, back. But we haven't got it officially.
Awesome, thank you. Alright, Legislative NHSBA, um, so Delegate Assembly is on October first. Um, so I'll be there. Jim used to go, so, you know, as we get closer, just let me know and, or, but Maria and Owen, she can put in. Yeah, so what, if one member wants to go and be the member for, you know. Um, deadline for resolutions, I think it's July eighteenth. I know we had talked about one, maybe doing one about the civics. But, um, I know April and I haven't really touched base about that, so I'll, I'll put that off, but. Anyway, I don't know.
To July eighteenth?
Yeah, July eighteenth, so the board would have to vote on that and stuff. I know we kind of, things have just gotten so crazy at the end of the year.
It is, but they, when they switched this October from like January, it kind of pushed a lot of this to the end of the year that we have to be getting together, but.
We can talk about that, maybe then. Um, they did send out, I just want to highlight a couple of bills, um, in the legislative update. So the bill's vetoed, as Wayne said, um, the governor vetoed the bill that would, it narrowly passed, I think, both the House and the Senate, and he vetoed it, um, that would prohibit schools from requiring face masks. Yeah.
When they passed it.
Well, yeah, yeah, so they passed it and then he vetoed it, yeah. So, um, and then, so bills, um, unable, let me see here, oh, they were unable to be solved in the committee of conference, so they're not moving forward. I just want to highlight this, the House bill about public comments, it's just, at school board meetings, the thirty minutes minimum. The House bill failed, but the Senate bill passed, so, um, I don't know how that's gonna look.
Thirty?
Yeah, thirty-minute public comment. And I don't know if it's gonna be at the beginning, if it can run concurrent, I'm, I don't know how that's gonna look, so we'll have to probably find all that out. Yeah. Um, I know, uh, let's see, the other one that was, um, unable to move forward was, remember there's a bill about the WRBS, about reporting requirements to parents, like more owners kind of stuff, but the WRBS, so that failed. Um, and then the bill passed by both bodies, and they're going to, it's going to the governors, the civics instruction one, they added that them, they are required to provide accommodations, um, so you have to take the citizenship test. But you, they added that you have to provide accommodations to students who need it, so that wasn't in the first round of it. Um, and they did remove like the local test option, where you could do a local test for the citizenship test, so now it is the citizenship test. But it's interesting, it looks like he's gonna veto the bill for colleges. But it looks like he's gonna pass the bill for high school, so, yeah. Um, I know, that's, that's someone, April, and I would be talking about maybe doing a resolution for it, but, um, the student school board member pa, um, pass is going to the governor, um, which is, we've always had that option, so for a long time, since, since Ed Patton started that one back in like two thousand ten, so he brought that up, so, had that one. Um, oh, about the content of an adequate education, remember how they were trying to get rid of a lot of like basic, really bare bones, and then what passed both, have both chambers was adding stuff, so they're adding civics, government, economics, and in history, you have to have Holocaust and genocide instruction. And they expanded the arts to specifically note music and visual art, so those were the pieces that they beefed it up with. Um, and like I said, and then the Senate bill passed about the public comments, the thirty-minute public comment period is for board meetings. I don't know, hopefully you can open it and it runs concurrent with the meeting, I hope. Or else maybe we'll be starting at five thirty.
So we'll start at five thirty with.
You can always have it at the end, and then if there's no one there.
Oh, that's a good, yeah, because we, we, yeah, because we have the two, so we can always just have the thirty minute at the end.
I think there was some wording about where it had to be in the meeting.
In a chunk, yeah. Oh, did you say you think there's wording that has to start off with it?
Where, and it's, yeah, I think there's some, if I remember right, I can't remember because there was two, so I can't, I always get them confused, but one had specifically where it needed to be in the meeting.
Okay, yeah, we'll have to check. I'm sure we'll hear a lot more about it then after the governor.
Yeah.
But, alright, so that, that's all the fun stuff I have to report about the legislature. Uh, next up, um, HASP, I don't think we have anything since last month, right?
Not that I know of.
Selectmen?
No update.
And is, uh, is Bill on from this left? I don't, no, okay. Because I, I was remiss, I forgot to call him last month. I only called on Sean, so. Alright, facilities, I know you have stuff there.
Yeah, I basically am gonna try to get back in the habit of, um, recapping all facility stuff after the meeting and include it in the board packet, but I printed off a list of stuff from our last meeting for you guys, and if you have questions, I can answer them.
Does anybody have questions for Sean?
And I can send it to April, since she's not here.
Thank you. Let's go like, I didn't get it.
Yeah, because you're not here.
She's only here virtually. She's here though. Any questions for Sean? I think that's a good idea. I mean, I don't want to say, but I'm gonna, I'll try to do that too. You know, to try to get in the habit for the couple of committees that I'm on and that, and have that. Oh, there it is. Alright, so, cool, thank you.
You're welcome. And I gave a copy to Maria for the minutes.
Awesome, thank you, guys. Alright, uh, Community Connections, April.
Uh, we've been posting events, a lot of stuff going on at the end of the school year, so I've been getting that, a lot of that out. Um, I did have a question, because I really feel like the lunch thing and parents needing to apply this year for the first month of next year. I didn't know, it, we kind of left that we were, that we should do a campaign about it, but I didn't know who was gonna write it up. I don't think there was a discussion about who was gonna start it.
I thought it was going through Community Connection, you guys were.
Right. Were we gonna start it?
So that we're gonna get, who is gonna send us?
So, I, I was speaking with Erica about that, um, yesterday, and she wants to be, and I totally agree, very aggressive about getting this message out. She wants to put it on the front of the packet in a bright neon piece of paper, um, that goes out to parents in the fall. We want to get it on Community Connections this summer, we want to get it, um, we really need to get the message out everywhere. Lunch is not free next year. Please apply for free and reduced. Even if you're not sure that you'd make it, please apply. Is there any messaging going out at the end of the year, like with the?
Because of the specific, like, the first, beginning of the year, if they don't apply now, they won't have lunch.
But I thought it wasn't, apply now, didn't I ask that? And it was like, you can't apply like right now.
You can't apply yet.
But you should be notifying people that this is coming, it's important.
And when the date they can apply, and is there a link?
Yeah, um.
She usually waits to get the paperwork. Erica does, she waits to hear from the Bureau of Nutrition and that, usually in August.
Right.
Um, so.
So maybe we could do it.
The paperwork could change each year, so.
Yeah.
It's done in early August.
Okay, so maybe we could.
So we've passed the deadline. If they haven't already filled out the paperwork now for this year, they won't have a free lunch at the beginning, first month next year.
No.
Not necessarily.
That was my understanding from the last meeting, like, if they haven't applied this, by, by a certain time this year, that they wouldn't have, they wouldn't have, because that first month, the school year.
Well, if they wait, if they wait till school starts and, and, and apply then, it'll, they'll go a month without it.
Right, that's what I'm saying.
Right.
But they should apply now.
I think there is a window of time, and I, I, I could be wrong.
Okay, I think, I think what that was about was, any, anybody who applied this year, it rolls over to the thirtieth day of school next year, their eligibility. So I think that's where things maybe got confused. We wanted to try to get those people, but those people do have to, so those people who did apply this year, and we did have people who applied this year, they have to reapply next year. After the thirtieth day, if they don't, of school, if they don't apply, they go back to being a paid lunch person. So, you're really gonna ask people to do the same thing twice at this late game.
Right, right.
You know, we want to get the information out and we want it back before school starts, so they, they can have their, their free meal. It's the very first meal. I mean, that would be ideal, so as soon as, I know that things go out in the packet, um, but I also know that Erica, you know, it gets to be tight, um, when they're printing the packet stuff. But I think as long as you communicate with Erica, and when she gets things, get it out there in, in a digital way, so people can do it, and then it'll follow up with the packet.
So if you could ask Erica to email s- information, I should, whatever, to Community Connections email, and then April and I will get it.
Okay.
And then.
But I think it would be great to get that message out now.
Yeah, without, without a link or anything, just get it out there and get them thinking about it. I saw, I saw you twenty-nine just posted something just yesterday, the day before, just kind of like, and they had like a web, a link to go to though, but I didn't look into that closely, but they, they're getting their messaging out, so we could just get a message out.
Well, people are so used to having, and hasn't everybody been getting free lunch from?
Yeah, two years, yeah. So, yeah, they need to know that that's going to stop, yeah. They need to prepare for that.
Someone just posted, they can apply until the last day of school. But then they have to apply again for next.
Yeah, but that's, that's for this year.
This year.
That only gets them through September thirtieth.
Exactly. And they'd have to apply again, so.
And that's why I understand.
That needs to be clarified.
Right.
Right, yes. If they, my question, I guess, if I can ask, sorry. Um, if they haven't applied for this year, and they apply next year, is it, is it, does it start like immediately, or will it start after the thirtieth of September, so like that first month, they won't have free or reduced lunch, is my question.
Erica qualifies the person as fast as she can get the application. And we're, here's the, here's where there's a little bit of a conundrum for us. The Abbey Group has moved to a new system called Titan. And the applications are actually going to be able to be, um, done online. And software will determine eligibility. Erica won't have to do it by hand anymore.
However, I think she's planning, I'm looking at every single one, anyway.
She is, but I'm just saying, it will speed up the process some, so we're kind of in the middle of a transition, so to speak. So I think the best key for us right now is to let people know.
Just get the word out.
Get the word out, it's about a day. And let Erica work with the Titan folks. To make sure how this is all going to happen, either online or on cable.
So they can apply now to get covered for September, until September thirtieth.
Right.
But then they have to apply again. Oh, yeah, you're right, thirtieth day, sure, thank you, yeah, so September twenty-one.
So, it, so, so to answer your question, April, if somebody applies in August, they get a free meal, it's, you know, as soon as Erica qualifies them. If somebody doesn't apply till September tenth, they have to pay for those meals prior to September tenth. And on September tenth, if she qualifies them, then they start receiving a free meal.
Okay.
So the sooner they apply.
I've just, I might, my biggest concern is that, you know, the people who haven't applied this year, and will apply when the packet comes, you know, might have some laps in lunches, and I don't want kids to go hungry.
Right.
That's why we need.
And, and we're hoping to get that message out way ahead of the packet.
Right.
But, still do the packet.
Yeah, alright, so if we start, if we start a campaign in like late July, August.
Yeah.
For people to apply to the online application, and it should help, hopefully.
Yeah, we can even start putting blurbs like now.
Yeah.
Next couple of weeks.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, so, yeah, we can talk, and then we got Erica, and make sure we just have all of our ducks in a row.
Yes.
Links available for next.
Yeah, that moves through the next, yeah, so that's for next, yeah.
Madam Chair, do we know the price of, it's been so long since we've charged something, I don't know what we're charging.
I don't know, Jody, since we, we approved it probably at some point, was Tom still here?
Yeah, I, I can't actually tell you. I know that the adult lunch went up. Uh, there is a worksheet called, I think, the PLE. Not really familiar with it yet, but I think I have to complete this worksheet, and then it will tell us what we can charge, and then.
They have to bring it to us.
It would be up to you to charge more.
Yeah, the board has to, so in August, so, yeah, so maybe we could find out like what we're charging.
Because that usually goes in the handbook that we update in the summertime, just curious.
Yeah.
And I, and I have another comp question. Um, I think last time I checked Community Connections, it had dismissal for middle high school. And I'm worried that that's a little misleading, because the elementary school will be dismissed at twelve fifty-five, so that could be added.
Twelve fifty-five?
I don't want to have the elementary parent showing up at twelve eighteen saying, etc., on Community Connections.
Yeah.
Because we need the time for the buses to go out and come back.
I think, is this the, the graphic that April posted from the, like, the newsletter, whatever. Alright, okay, yeah, so what was that, twelve fifty-five?
Twelve fifty-five.
Did you catch?
Elementary?
Elementary, twelve fifty-five.
Okay.
Well, thank you, Joe. Alright. Anything else, April?
I know.
Alright, great, thank you. Uh, tuition, we had nothing. Behavioral support, she, we had, yeah.
Yeah. So, um, I went to my first behavioral support team meeting on the thirteenth. Um, but I basically got updates from each of the schools and what was happening there. Um, what challenges they were having, what, uh, what was working. And it's, it's kind of hard, because I'm coming back into it again, I don't really know where I am, so I was taking a lot of notes, but I'm just kind of getting my feet wet again. Um, they're talking about like different shifts in the day at the elementary school, like where the kids have the most problem. Their, their challenge is self-regulating, like going from recess to lunch and back in the classroom, and just being ready to learn in the morning. Uh, the high school, they're talking about, uh, interventionists and how well that's working, we talked about that. Um, and, and Freitag was just talking about how, uh, basically, she's just trying to build relationships and trust with students, and that's, you know, helping the behaviors as well. Tim talked about the diversity clause that we have, and the concerns that they have about slurs that are being used, and some gender identity issues.
Um, I will say that, uh, Tim and I have been working very hard together on what you're mentioning. And so far with the high school, we've had a hundred percent reduction. There hasn't been a slur used by a high schooler, uh, in the past several, several months. Down, uh, in the middle school, uh, it's still a work in progress, but we're down to about twelve percent.
Wow, okay.
So it is, it is, seems, seems to be having an impact.
Excellent. Um, and then they just, you know, just talked about some of the hurdles and ways that they're gonna deal with, and keeping our man on is, was higher on their list.
Yeah, definitely. Great. Do you have anything?
No, unfortunately, yeah, I'll certainly try to make the next one. They, they made it ten fifteen.
We're changing the time, sorry. We changed the time. Because, um, Fridays in the morning were super hard for me.
Yeah.
It worked for Sean, because he had Fridays off.
Because he had Fridays off.
So, uh, the next meeting, Julie, is gonna be September thirteenth, Tuesday at nine thirty in the morning.
Still at nine thirty, still a daytime meeting. Oh, wait a minute, why do I have a calendar, why do I have a meeting in my calendar for next Friday? Do we at some point?
Next Friday?
I don't know why. Well, I have Friday, June seventeenth, maybe that was one of the ones Joe sent out, and then we retracted and we got off.
Did I send out, you know, filled up the whole year?
Right. So that's probably an old one, so.
Tuesday.
Tuesday, when, September?
September thirteenth?
Yeah, it's daytime in general, maybe a challenge, but I'll certainly do my best. Maybe you can zoom. Our teams into it, so that we do that sometimes. And certainly do that. Thank you guys. Alright, joint loss, April, probably haven't had one since before.
Now.
Alright, citizen comments, there's no citizens here, so Ann, if you wanna. Donna, you have anything?
I'm all set, thank you.
iPhone?
I'm all set, thank you very much.
I have something I'd like to say. This will be my last board meeting. I've been attending them for almost thirty years. They're probably encountered one in the ones I've missed. I'm not saying this for myself, but for those of their left and future district employees. Over the past eleven years, I've worked for the Hinsdale School District. When I was hired for Hinsdale, I became an exempt employee, which in hindsight, I regret. When the SU, SAU thirty eight being hourly, I only worked forty hours. There was no overtime. If I had a night meeting, which there was plenty, because I worked for both Hinsdale and Winchester, I would leave early on Fridays. It didn't enable me to keep a somewhat safe schedule.
And, 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 and I'm sorry, but this citizen comments, this sounds like a personnel issue?
No, this is not a personnel issue. This is in regards to the comments that were made at the public meeting last month. By, by board members.
Well, Wayne, do you know, this, what do you guys think? I mean, we're talking about. In your job, you.
No. I have always kept the spreadsheet of my hours. At Hinsdale, over the past eleven years, I have worked each order so far, like two thousand three hundred and twenty six hours. Over the forty hours. It's over one full year. If I was paid for that, you would owe me about ninety three thousand dollars. It's not unusual for any member of the A team. These people do not do it for the money. They do, if they would, they would be working in the corporate world, making twenty to fifty thousand dollars per year. Discussion was held regarding vacation, sick and summer hours. At the last more board meeting that was demoralizing to the staff, and I would assume many future staff would like to apply for these. As was quoted in the May eleventh. If I put in over twenty three hundred hours, how many more do you think the principals, vice principals, sped directors, et cetera, have put in? They're available twenty four seven to their staff, parents, they attend games, dances, PTA, PTSA meetings. You know that phrase, occasional night meetings, that's in the job description? Think about how many times you as a board member have. Have said about the amount of meetings, time set by two, and you may get what some of the district exempt employees have attended. I know that in the past eleven years, many have lost over five or ten days vacation here because it was just no time to take them. And even when you're on vacation, you're checking emails, responding to text message, messages. Let's take sick days. Why do you think they accumulate?
And I'm really sorry, I'm gonna have to stop you. This is a personnel issue. You're talking about your hours working. Our teachers work just as many hours as well. So if you would like to, please submit, submit your comments for the record, but unless this is a citizen comment. I don't think it's appropriate. No, but, but to talk about your employment with the district, I don't think we have a teacher in here doing this. We would, we would stop, stop it in this case. I'm really sorry, I'm looking at my fellow board members and I'm gauging your reactions and I. I, I think we might, you know, be on the same page here, I'm sorry. Yeah, this is definitely a personnel matter that we would not talk about personnel issues in public like this. I'm sorry.
You did last month.
Well, in general. Please, please, please give that to Maria.
I was talking in general.
Um, okay.
And it, you know.
Okay, okay, thank you, Ann.
You're welcome, thank you.
Any other citizen comment? Oh, no, we're done here. Alright, need a motion to go in non-public.
Motion to go in non-public.
Roll call.
Yes.
Yes, 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 April?
Yes.
Thank you.
Carl has left the room.
Thank you very much for clarifying that. I apologize.
I'm, I'm saying the motion.
I need Chris and Joe, just for the.
You know, we need you, your face looks like you didn't melt.
I.
I feel like.
We're still recording.